Uh huh. Fifty and I'll be down fifty eight.
You were eighty three.
Uh huh, eighty three. I would tell you five years is far news. I I actually think it's relative.
But my mind still, you know? But then I see myself in the mirror, or I gotta do something.
Right, yeah.
There's ports at the head on here.
No.
You see through the clock.
Right after the clock, because there goes your.
Yeah. It goes here.
Yeah. It's very good.
Very impressive. Six months, I went to that, I went to. I was watching the. And the port bearing up in it. Getting too dirty. The government's wearing the yellow. They're not fully tuned. And how many of you do this? I go for a miss. There are a lot of people.
Call to order. Good evening, board members. This February the first twenty twenty-three special meeting is called to order at. Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Wait a minute. Mr. Perez. Okay. Is there one minute?
Six. Six o'clock.
It's called to order. Good evening, board members, staff and community, listeners and uh livestream YouTube. This February the first twenty twenty-three special meeting is called to order at six o'clock. Sorry, Ms. Rodriguez. Let the minutes show that all members in attendance. Um trustees not attending is Mr. Jaime Morales. And Mr. Otan Escobar. Reasons unknown. At this time, Mrs. Julieta Sepulveda Ramirez, would you leave us in the page of religions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the repulsive and righteous sense of one nation under. Indivisible, infinite, just as far off. On the judicial basis, I pledge allegiance. To the state of the country.
The vision statement, working together, Favens ISD creates a positive and lasting impact to multiple learning opportunities. The mission statement, all students in the district will be prepared for to be successful lifelong global learners. Communities, patients and visitors, Mrs. Rodriguez. Okay, due to the fact that nobody signed up, I'm instructed, I don't need to do the background information on that. Thank you. What a trustee's business agenda item, approval of the H VAC purchase exceeding fifty thousand for Favens Middle School. Dr. Anna Galavies. And also Mister um. David Tellas, I mean David Tellas, David Ayala, sorry.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Dr. Vigil and members of the board. Um, my name is David Ayala, I'm the director of maintenance and operations for the district. Uh, tonight we bring uh before your approval uh for HVAC purchase exceeding fifty thousand dollars for Favens Middle School. As you may recall, this is a continuation from our January eighteenth board meeting. Um, and we're here to present the um additional information requested uh for these units. Um, included in your board packet was a uh matrix system uh administration used selecting these two items. Um, and then on it uh some warranty information uh that was requested. Um, if you can see uh from the matrix, uh both um proposals that we received uh do provide a um. A workman's uh installation warranty, the equipment warranty, um and then the lead time. Uh, we did factor in with the matrix uh on all these factors. Administration is recommending to proceed with proposal number one uh for pool.
Questions from the board members at this time?
Yes, ma'am, to the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Ayala, I see that um the price increased on proposal number one.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Uh, and um you know why is that? Since last meeting that you had. What you had uh mentioned was that Veritek was going to have that um that price without that um increase. And if we would go with C E C that they would have a five percent increase due to the fact that it was January first, I mean January fifth or so forth. But here I see.
So, so uh if you look at the matrix, uh the last proposal is that um the both companies had a price increase. Um, Veritek did um have it under proposal. Uh, controlling equipment is the updated proposal that we present tonight as well. Um, and attached on there um is an email where they came back and um honored that same price. So, C uh second company is the one that that remained the same, however, the first proposal um has a better lead time. Um, that has uh extended warranty of five years for for the parts and heater exchange. Um, and it's a. A sixteen, a sixteen to twenty-four week lead time for the first proposal compared to a twenty-five to thirty week lead time on the second.
Also, uh, on last meeting, sir, we had asked for the. Veritek for the assessment of which units were to be changed. And here, the only thing that I see, Mr. Ayala, is that the date was changed, which was updated, and the price was increased. And the reason that I'm saying this is because what we asked for was what we're gonna be exchanging. What for what as C E C proposed under.
So if you see on the on the first proposal for Veritek Solutions, under the tag, it has R T U. And it specified five, six, nine, eleven, nineteen, twenty-four, fifty. And then below that, it's quantity seven, and then below that, R T U sixty, sixty-one and sixty-two, quantity three. Be in the second page. On the second page, highlighted red, it has R T U, the existing model, and then the the ton that it is. So those are would be the units specified that would be replaced on each. Um, and also, if you look at the second proposal, um on the sheet number two. It also specifies the unit number five, six, nine, fifty, or five ton, eleven and twenty-four, or seven and a half ton. Nineteen is a six ton, and then sixty, sixty-one and sixty-two are twenty ton.
Okay, um, I I see this. Also, sir, um proposal number one, Veritek. Um, where items included, you have miscellaneous materials as required for installation of new. We assume we're using existing gas and electrical items as much as possible. On the hoisting was assumed as well to be standard crane, long reach or oversized cranes were not considered. And therefore, pricing is subject to change upon final inspection. Um, here, Mister Ayala, on the assume part, it's telling me that they never came to assess if they were gonna need um. A long reach crane to remove the unit. Because this is an open end quote that's subject to change. So these people might increase their their uh price.
Yes, sir.
Now, with C E C. Go and see on their email. Not only are they honoring our quoted price, okay, but it's a turnkey. Installation, meaning that. Included is their. Their removal and installation of the new. Pricing to crane services by Southwestern Industrial Contractors and Rivers. So they did come and assess that, you know what? Uh, the crane that we're getting is to remove, so there's not gonna be extra fees.
So, so both companies did come out here uh with the same company, actually. If you look at under that same one, um, it does say uh crane service by Southwest Industrial Crane.
Yeah, that's the same company.
Yeah, so both companies did all come out here um to evaluate, because once they get the proposal, um, the crane company does come out here to do. A side assessment uh to ensure what crane they would need. In this case, the one that kind of factors into it would be the twenty tons, but both use uh crane, Southwest Crane Services.
The only thing with this, Mr. Ayala, is um. Um, say fees that are gonna come out in the future, like when the installation is going to be done. Now, also, if you could explain to me a little bit about this. Uh, installation should also include technical T A B services from our net certified test and balance division. And adjust economizer damper. I don't see that on the other quote. On the other proposal, number one from Veritek.
So they both companies do um do have the startup um with the economizers. And because that's part of the installation, it's all, it's all complete in one with the test and balance as well. So they start up and fire up the unit once it's properly uh tested and balanced. And they uh um we accept it is when the actual warranty period um is uh is established.
Uh, you're telling me that both companies do it, but here on Veritek, it's not stated on the proposal. All it says is equipment startup and Veritek service.
Um, also included with your packet was an email that I received, part of that warranty. If you look at the email dated uh Tuesday, January twenty-six. It's part of the highlighted item, it does say one year. Um, as far as the the warranty, they they kind of put it out in the email as well. That it's a one-year equipment startup labor warranty on the equipment installation and mechanical operation. And that flows after we accept, um, we do accept the um the work, and it is a test tested and balanced. Um, and we accept the job itself. And this is this, um, all this is was outlined, um, because proposal number one, we've already had um as the installation at the high school. Um, so we actually have worked with both companies um in the past um for our controls and in some HVAC installation.
I understand that, sir, about the warranties, but the the testing part of it and the test and balance is controlling the airflow to through their registers.
Yes, sir.
To make sure that the airflow is correct.
Correct.
The economizer damper is up there on the unit. We.
Yes, sir.
Suggested fifty to twenty percent for the for the air to flow into the to the unit. That's what we need, sir, on. If it was Veritek or the other companies to make sure that they're completing these tests before they they um, if you want to call it, um. They do the install, that's, and if we have it on writing.
That would be after the installation, that would be prior for us accepting the job.
Yes, sir. Correct. And the installation shall include on on C E C, that's that was my point. Now, I see here also, Mr. Ayala, that keynote C E C has provided controls upgrade to Favens Middle School, which include replacement of all T stats. Meaning the thermostat with the Snyder Electric Eco Structure. And CO2 centers for all unit, but is not part of this quotation.
Yes, sir.
So that's a separate, that's part of a a separate project um that we have uh received also um. Different proposal, but that is a separate um, that is a separate uh project that. Do you have an estimate price on that?
We do have um estimated prices on that, but again, this is not, um, we're not proposing that one at this time. Um, but they they do also the controls part of it.
Okay, the reason I'm saying because now that Veritek. Raise the price. And C E C is willing to work with our district in honoring that price. Not only that, but with that money that we'll be saving with um C E C. Uh, we could maybe invest it on that other quotation that that you need. That's the reason I was saying how much that is.
I'll defer that to Mr. Torres.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, members of the board, Dr. Vigil, my name is Martin Torres. Actually, you can see on your uh matrix uh sheet underneath, under board meeting dated one seventeen, the price didn't increase. It's the same price as the one we present to you all. When you see the column red, that's the difference between the two codes. So the price did not increase. The original price we brought to the board in one seventeen was two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
And from last board meeting, it was uh two twenty-nine, it'll be, the only thing from last board meeting, it included the tax, and we're taxing.
The tax was removed, yes, sir, for for vendor number two.
For vendor number two.
Yes, sir.
That's why, um, that's why I suggest we're going with vendor number two. Why? Because of what they have to offer and what they proposed on on the actual proposal that they sent to us.
Okay, we bring in both uh options to you all, we're making the recommendation based on the warranty, the lead time. If we go with vendor number two, we wait in a twenty-five weeks to thirty weeks for installation. Vendor number one, we're looking at sixteen weeks to twenty-four weeks installation.
Here on. See, on the email, if you could see, it says um lead time of twenty-four weeks on the email.
That's controlling the equipment.
Uh, on the last week where it says um.
Yes. Yeah, it shows from twenty-four, twenty-seven or thirty weeks. So what we're trying to do is uh go with the fastest installation we can. We understand there's a price difference and there's a price change. And thus where we brought the two quotes to you all for your review and give us your uh whatever the board decides to go with it. We we can negotiate and we can try to get this as quick as possible. Remember, the summertime is coming around the corner, and we need to uh hopefully get this uh resolved and approved by the board, whatever the direction you all give us to the administration.
Correct.
But the price is gonna make sure the price didn't increase. The only thing was removed from the second quote was a tax that was included on the regional code. But it didn't increase from the original price we brought on the on the January seventeen meeting.
No, the only one that increased is the first proposal from Veritek.
No, it didn't increase, it's the same price we brought you on January seventeen. Yes, sir, you see the seven thousand on red, that's the difference between both of them. One increased by seventeen, by seven thousand, the other one's increased by seven thousand. That's the only difference.
Through the chair, uh, Mr. Torres, so you're saying that. Veritek also honored their proposed.
Yes, sir.
Which was.
Two thirty-seven uh five thirty-seven dollars, two thirty-six, five thirty-seven, yes, sir.
Okay, even though it was expired for.
Yes, sir. Both of them honor the the price.
Okay, sure. On the. On the proposal, where do you have the price?
So if you, if you also look at it, the the matrix system would factor it into it.
No, but here on the proposal.
Oh, I don't see. Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the, on the, on the second page. So the the addition of of both of those two prices.
Is that page two a four?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a minute.
Ms. Gonzalez, may I speak?
Go ahead, Dr. Vigil.
Um, Mister Estrada, Mister Arnellas, I'm just um reinforcing what Mister Torres and Mister Ayala have said. Um. From our conversation that the last time that we spoke about this, I asked them to create a matrix. The portion that talks about the lead time was given a lot of weight, because we talked about that and the um. Actually, you were the ones that um brought it to our attention, that you were willing to have a special board meeting just so that we can get moving forward with this. And so that portion of the matrix did count for a lot. And there's um enough of a difference that we're looking at, uh Mister Ayala can confirm. Um, how many weeks out we would be looking at the end of May versus uh this, deep into the summertime. So um just wanted to emphasize that that's something that we had talked about, that was important to you. Um, and Mister Ayala, if you'll review those dates, you had talked about. When twenty-four weeks or whatever it is that is on there will get us.
Yes, um, thank you, Dr. Vigil, and um just to compare both um on the lead times for proposal number one on Veritek, sixteen to twenty-four weeks. Um, we would be looking at the week uh, May twenty-first, between the week May twenty-first and June sixteenth. For delivery for the first proposal, as compared to the second one, the twenty-five to thirty weeks. Be looking between the week of June twenty-third and the week of um August twenty-seventh. And that weighs heavily uh due to the fact that um the latter part of June and the entire month of July are are. And even so carried into August, um, our hottest season.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Flores.
I uh, we 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 had this special meeting because of the of the time, I mean, that that was the whole reason. You know, I feel like this should have been approved last time we met, but you know, we decided that that's we're gonna table this. So so you've brought it brought the information that we need to make this decision. And uh, and obviously, the time is is an issue, you know, we we're we're year-round now, we're not, we don't have summer summers off anymore. And uh, what's more important to me is that kids are cool, rather than than uh, these are ester funds, am I correct? These are. Yes, pen, okay, so you know, that 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 is more important to me than 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 uh saving a few thousand dollars here. Uh, uh, the 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 children that, you know, that we, obviously, you know, you're a you're a school teacher, that's very important. If you're, if, you know, I I mean, I can, everybody's got opinions about this stuff, but I think most teachers would agree that if if their students are not comfortable. I'm married to a teacher, my mother was a teacher, you know, I'm I'm I come from a family of teachers. And uh, you know, i- if they're not comfortable, you're not gonna get a hundred percent out of your teachers, you're not gonna get a hundred percent out of your kids. And I I just think this is, you know, administration is recommending this, I mean, there's a reason why uh that we we brought this back up, you know, just so we could try to get the. Get the time, not we would have been waiting another month, and so. So that being said, uh, Madam Chairman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to uh make the motion to prove this is presented.
But you haven't even asked.
I haven't made a.
You already made it, they already made the recommendation. You made the recommendation.
Well, I.
Through the chair, I mean, yes.
And I I get you, sir, Flores, what you said, the only thing about this is doing some research about Daikin. It's been in the market for two years, crane has been over thirty years in the market, okay?
Understand.
And I get you.
Yeah, but but I have a, I have a, I have a motion on the table, so we have to either, either.
Okay, we, you have a motion, but we wanna go ahead and have a discussion, Mr. Flores.
If there's a second, then we can.
Okay, is there a second for discussion?
To discuss?
Yes.
No, a second, I have to have a second.
Okay, since he did a motion, do we have a second, uh, do we have a second on the motion of uh, Mr. Flores, do you have a second? No. Okay, so at this point, then we'll go ahead and have a discussion.
Motion fails.
I just have a comment through the chair. I agree with you, Mister Flores, but we have to take into consideration, yes, the children, that which is the first priority. Second is the cost, we have been in the hole, and I think we're still in the hole. Now. First meeting back in November, I asked for, we asked for the balance of the ester money. We have not gotten that. How can we buy if we don't even know how much money we have? Mister Flores, do you agree or disagree?
No, I I I totally agree with you, but I but I I'm gonna, I'm gonna, not, I'm not gonna correct you, but I'm gonna just tell you the way that I look at it. So we are not the managers of this district. So we got it, we have to put our trust in our superintendent and our assistant superintendent of finance to ensure that they're giving us the right information. And we have the opportunity, unlike people out there in the community, to ask these questions before this meeting even started. Like, we all had, we've all had this, you could have asked these questions all week long.
At this time, I'll call, I'll call the question. At this time, I'm gonna call the question, I will call the question.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the question due to the fact that. It looks like um. They're still questioning on.
No, there's no more question.
There's no more question, okay.
Through the chair, I just.
Okay, so there if there is any other question, there's still discussion, we we, other board members did not have an opportunity to discuss this item. So, so I call the question, but I.
And I second, I second, so you called the question, now you gotta call for a vote.
Okay.
Second.
So even if we do a vote, just so you all know, it doesn't mean you have to vote, okay? And it goes back to discussion, okay? Yes, just.
Ms. Gonzalez, point of order.
Yes.
You you're you're completely missing, missing, mixing this up.
No.
You called the question, you called the question, I second it, you have to put it up for a vote.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm gonna put it up for a vote.
So.
Mister Flores.
Okay.
Okay. Mister Lenas.
Hi.
Mrs. uh, Sepulveda Ramirez. Mister Charlie. I'm sorry, Mrs.. Ms. Gonzalez, name, okay? So this is gonna go back to discussion. Because we need to determine a decision. So we need clarification of what is being asked from from all of us. So we need clarification so we can continue. Okay, so I open again for discussion.
Through the chair. So, uh, Mister Flores, I understand where you're coming from about, okay, it's, the thing is, sir. Daikin has been in the market, like I said before, in the street for two years, train has been here for many, many years. We have a local rep and a local dealer support tech here in El Paso. And this should have been done prior to Favens High School, but it's already set in place, that's mine. The thing is, sir, if these units start going out in five years or six years, the Daikin, which is a new.
The thing is, sir, if these units start going out in five years or six years, the Dyken, which is a new, uh, market that but new on the market compared to Train, in five years, we will not, we will not have those ESSER funds to start replacing those units. And I know that last time, I mentioned that we need to keep everything, um, across the board, Dyken, that wait for the parts. But after doing some re- research on this, the thing is that Dyken, we don't know what the outcome's going to be. Right now, yes, we have the kids, and they don't have the air conditioner or the heater, like you said, but in five years, we're not gonna have this money. So we're not gonna be able to replace those units if they go out. Now, Train, I know that maybe the part or, or the, the units are gonna come in a few weeks later, but at least we know that they're gonna be there for a longer time to work.
We know that or we assume that?
We know that.
See, so I, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm
Because Train has been in the industry for more than thirty
I, I understand that.
And Dyken, it's new. And that's the only thing that I want for the future, for our kids, when they're suffering, like you say, without and us saying, we don't have the money for it. So I just wanna invest our money wisely.
I think we all do.
Okay, and that's why, I'm not saying we're not gonna propose it, I'm just saying, if they agree, let's propose with the second proposal, and it'll be done tonight.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you my opinion on this. So this is just because you're a new board member, and I, I think you don't understand what our role is here. So just understand that we, we're not a board of managers.
Please educate us, Mr. Flores.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying, it's just out of experience. You know, we're not a board of managers. We, we, it's like me telling the athletic department, I want you to buy Wilson volleyballs, not the other ones. I want Wilsons because I've done my research. Well, that's not my job. That's the athletic director's job, it's a superintendent's job. It's not my job to tell these gentlemen what I think we should buy. I, I don't like this carpet, I wanna go with this other company, because I know they're good. And I know they got a better warranty. We have to trust the people that work here to do the, to do the job here. We can't, we this is in our role, is what I'm trying to tell you.
It is our role, Mr. Flores. It is our role. Yes, it is.
I understand, Mr. Flores, and, and I trust you, Mr. Ariala, and, and, um, the only thing is, what the vendor is proposing. And this vendor is willing to work with us and not honoring their price, doing all this other additional stuff for us, like it's supposed to be. Oxygen sensors, making sure that the, the damp, uh, is it, uh, economizer dampers are adjusted, so we don't have issues, Mr. Flores.
I, I understand, I understand.
Mr. Salah, at this time, uh, I would like to ask if we can, uh, ask another board member to, to, um, also discuss, and then, and then if if you still have questions, uh, we can go back to, to your continued discussion. Um, Mrs. Ramirez Sepulveda, I mean, Sepulveda Ramirez, uh, you have a question?
I, I wanted to say that, Mr. Flores is saying that this is not our job. This is, we were voted here to do the best for our school district, and it is our job to look after our students, administration, community. That's why we were voted in for the board, and I'm sorry, but it is our job to try to make the best, the best, uh, acknowledgements on everything. So that
Is there any other question?
Gonzalez, if you don't mind, I can go back and answer the two questions. I think they're on the table right now, or Mr. uh, Ornelas?
Mister, yeah, Mr. uh, Flores, can we just, uh, can you just wait?
Yes.
Just a couple of more minutes, just to see if there's more discussion, and then we can go ahead and finalize.
Through the chair, we, it will get approved. Now, which one will it, are we gonna approve? That's the question. Now, in order for this to run smoothly, and I had, think I had spoken to Dr. Vehi about this, our agenda, our proposals, anything that's presented needs to be done correctly. By having a proposal that says assume, you're asking for trouble at that point, because you don't know what's gonna happen, and by assuming, and when you have it written down, what they're, uh, guaranteeing, that's just a fact. The other is not a fact. You're assuming. If nothing goes wrong, what if it does go wrong? But that's our job.
I will only, uh, like to address to where, uh, one of these companies going to be, um, we're gonna be probably making a decision. Be- because it's very important for our students, teachers, and staff in, in the classrooms and in the facilities. But I just want, on the mutations that they have, that, um, the CEC, uh, company, it's not much of a difference to where, um, VTEC is, is, is saying of the twenty-first, it's just like, May twenty, twenty-first, and the other one is June twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-third, okay? So, um, due to the fact that on this documentation and assuming, uh, that's what I was gonna bring up, because it, it's very important that we do not have the actual contracts and the also, the, the written contract that our company does. And it, it, it's not a common practice that a company will give you this kind of, 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 of proposing when they, when they know that they're securing our units for for our district. So, um, whether we go with, with, uh, either one of them, the difference is, they're still, we're not gonna meet the, 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 the guidelines that we wanted for it to be before May. It's gonna be after the fact. And yes, we're, I mean, we're, we're year-round student, uh, uh, district to where, um, this has been going on, I'm just very surprised that we didn't bring, this, this wasn't brought back to us, uh, last year. So we could have started since last year, but we can't make up time. So this board has made, this now has to make a decision on these two, uh, quotes that have been, from these two companies that we have this evening. And, and just make the best recommendation, uh, that we, we're gonna hear, I'm Mr. Torres, for the district. Regardless whether it's ESSER fund or not, we still, we still have to pick up what is not gonna be in the future for, for monies that are not gonna be allocated for, for our district.
I'm gonna go back a little bit on the questions that were brought to the table. As far as the warranty goes, Mr. Estrada, there's actually on your, uh, sheet, you can see under Dyken units, you have twenty years parts warranty when all gas heats exchange parts. Five years parts warranty in all parts, parts including compressors. With the second option, we have five tons less one year, full parts, warranty five years compressor and parts and heat exchange warranty. When units over six tons and up, in three, it's actually five year compressor and ten years heat exchange warranty. That was one of the factors that we put in there. The second factor was the deliver of the units between both of them and the price, that both of them were able to respect the price. And yes, there's different units, different brands, you know, we taking the risk that may break following year and still have the warranty. But based on the information we got and the base on the, on the quotes, that's why we did the recommendation, bringing you those two, uh, vendors. As far as the money goes available, we actually, for a little background on those, uh, newborn members, we put one point seven million dollars under capital assets. Those are you, units over five thousand dollars. Uh, we still have money available for this to be installed, otherwise, uh, we wouldn't route it over to the board. I don't have the balances yet, because that's one of the things that, uh, Dr. Calaviz can provide you with the balances actual and provide you, and this is how much we got left after this purchase, and then the rest of the work plan that we have under ESSER. Uh, I think we brought it to the board, maybe last year, when we did the, uh, community meetings and the budgets and everything. And we can definitely bring you up to, uh, those newborn members with the new information that you all require. But as far as the money goes, that's what, uh, we got so far. Uh, we put one point seven million dollars for capital projects under the budget.
If there's not any other questions from any of the board members before we go ahead and do more, uh,
I have a question for board members. Has anybody had any contact with any of these companies?
No, sir. Oh, I didn't even know about them too. I read their proposal.
Now, due to the fact that you said that question, uh, to the board members, Mr. Flores, I would like to address that to also to Mr. Ariala. Do you have any
I hope he has.
Do you, do you have, I mean, what is your experience with these companies, Mr. Ariala?
Um, I have worked with, uh, both companies, um, here at, uh, Feynman's ISD. Uh, Control and Equipment does, uh, provide control services, uh, for the district currently providing. Um, Veritex Solutions is a, a authorized, uh, representative for Dyken units, but they also spec out, um, York units, they also spec out other units as well. Um, and then they do have a strong support system here locally, as well as train. Um, and technicians and training available for the Dyken product, as well as other products available out in the market. Um, so I do have communication with both. Um, here locally with the district, we have worked, uh, with both companies, as, uh, Veritex is the one that provided the, uh, new ACs for the high school. And they, they do continue to provide support, um, on any questions or anything that we have on any parts or warranties or, or uh, we're still under the one-year, um, warranty, uh, with Veritex for the high schools. Through the chair, uh, this is for Mr. Flores. Mr. Flores, you said that on proposal number one, it had stayed the same from two thirty-six amount, two hundred and thirty-six, five thirty-seven than your proposal.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on our January meeting that we had, if you go back to January thirteen, twenty twenty-three, Veritex HVAC replacement high school, the cost is two hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy. So how are you telling me it's the same, what you presented, um, January?
Remember that last meeting, we provide you with an update quote, because the one we brought you first was, uh, the five percent increase that we got on the second quote that we provide you on that meeting. So you probably, I don't know, you're looking at the old quote before we give you the five percent new quote on that meeting. And I think Mr. Ariala brought up to you saying, uh, we're looking at five percent increase, uh, because parts and laborers or something like that, I recall. But it was a five percent increase of the two thirty-six, five thirty-seven.
Well, I only have what was presented to us.
Yes, I think you got a paper copy, sir, on the meeting. So the PowerPoint that you have is, is the old version, and I think Terry provided you with a new version with a five percent increase.
And through the chair, this is what I'm talking about. In order to avoid all these miscommunications
Yes, sir.
Everything should be done properly, just like we expect our central office staff, we expect our teachers, and teachers expect their children, uh, their students to do it. And we're not showing that, we're not being a good role model here, because to avoid all these miscommu- communications, whatever you present to us should be done properly. No updates at the very last moment. That's why we get our packet, uh, some days before our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ornelas. I would address, uh, Dr. Vehi, are, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Dr. Vehi, um, in our prior discussion, I, me and you discussed this concern about not giving, um, information on the night of the board meeting, if it could be delivered beforehand. Could you please tell me what's, what's the reason that we're, we're just receiving some, the revision of what we received this evening before the board meeting?
I, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Ariala for that. Um, I, I received word that there was an update also, um, a- and I don't know what that update is, so I'd like to defer to Mr. Ariala.
Thank you, Dr. Vehi.
Why we did get a last minute? Yes, I'm in agreement with everybody, and I would like to know why there is a, uh, what the difference is.
Um, the, the difference was, um, when this was scanned, it was not scanned back, uh, front and back of the page. Uh, so your, your board packet that you received prior was, didn't include the back sheet of it. Oh.
Did you receive, you got that one? Yeah, they, they
We got a, through the chair, we got an update last time, and we got an update today.
Yes, because the Now make sure this
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
So, so the, the first proposal was not changed at all. Um, the second one was the one that was updated, uh, from the previous board meeting that, um, with the no tax. And then the, also the email, um, stating that they, they would honor the originally quoted price. Oh. Although there was a major price increase, if you look at that first sentence on that email, that there had been a major price increase um, at the beginning of the year. So you're telling me, what you presented last month, meeting, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and now it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand? I'm sorry, Mr. Salah, what was the question? It's just for Veritex, you had a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and now it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand? It's two different line items, so combined together. On the top one. Yes, so that would reflect Yeah, so that would reflect a five percent increase that was done across the board in, in the industry. So right now, when I asked, Veritex raised the price five percent, uh, you guys told me they did it, they kept the same price. From last, the, the proposal that you received last board meeting. Correct, and that's why, when the meeting started, I said, Veritex, uh, upgraded the price from last time, and the other company, they honored it. And even though they had, uh, quoted us back in September, I believe, that was the last, uh Yes, Veritex. Wow. So, so the original, so what was presented last month, Mr. Salah, was the same proposal with the five percent increase that was from the original quote. And then, um, we were, we were recommending one, and then we got the updated quote, probably the second, the second proposal, which they honored the original quoted price. They didn't include the markup on that the industry received in the beginning of the year. Uh, I understand, Mr. Ariala, but what you presented to us was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Yes, no, I understand, and, and that was before they added the five percent. Okay. Now, it's a hundred and thirty-four. Now to get this approved, like you do propose, you guys are proposing this for a higher price. Right? I, I, I'm, I'm going by the last January packet from last board meeting.
And remember we get the
Mm-hmm.
Which is, which is this The one thirty-four thousand.
Uh, Mr. The chair, uh, Mr. Torres, I do appreciate that, but, uh, I need to ask Dr. Calaviz, since she is on the agenda. Doctor
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Dr. Vehi, and members of the board. Um, I, I'm a bit confused because I did, uh, type up a memo, I did, uh, turn it into Ms. Rodriguez's, I'll follow up to see what happened and to see why you didn't receive those balances. Um, policy with ESSER is that it's every six months, so every six months, we provide a renewal to a public. Right now, if you go onto the district webpage, the use of funds plan is on there. We're only required for ESSER three to post. However, if you request it as well, whenever I do the ESSER three updates, I can include an ESSER two update. This purchase right here is for ESSER two.
So you're saying you did turn in the balances?
Yes.
Because in the last packet, we got, uh, and I don't even know if we were in compliance or not, we got the amounts for the accounts for, I guess, Dyken's the amounts for the accounts for, I guess, diapers, teachers, uh you name it, and that's through. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a federal grant, is that public? The accounts, what's going to what account?
Um so right now, what's public is Esser three, yes, I post the use of fund plan. So I think what you're talking about is an expense report, but.
That's what you gave us the last time.
Uh no, but I provided after the meeting, I I provided uh Ms. Rodriguez with the memo that was said to be delivered to all board members.
No, I, we requested the balances from the first meeting, I requested it. You're gonna have to educate me. Cause I don't see how the board has been approving or not approving stuff without balances, honestly.
I just wanna share, uh Mr. Ornelas, that um we are going to be, Dr. Vehi, are you are you with it with us? Dr. Vehi, um.
I'm here.
Okay. I think to avoid these kind of situations, um we may have to be a little bit more transparent and we're we're presenting to the board. And um yes, uh one of the questions that Mr. Flores said that we get the packet delivered to us ahead of time. So it wouldn't have made a difference because too much of a difference because we still received a new update of what was presented this evening, okay, so me and you will discuss this in a future manner to, you know, to align what we need to do, Dr. Vehi, um so to avoid these kind of situations. Uh I apologize to the board, you know, because me and Dr. Vehi do sit and um prepare the agenda, and if these things that she needs to look into and inform me, then uh that's what we'll do. And um I guess you've heard everything that that we're deficient of, some of the documentation that was not permitted to us this evening, Dr. Vehi. But me and you can sit together, um if we need to sit more than one time a week to make sure that everything's aligned, so we don't have these kind of surprises. Um especially since uh we do have YouTube and people, our community and people and teachers and administrators that are not able to attend are listening to our conversations. And uh and uh another question that was arise from Mr. Flores of the boss, us being trained, we're trying to do the best job that we can in the short time that we have as new officers, and also me as a chair. So please bear with us, we're trying to do the best that we can to uh make sure that we are knowledgeable about what we're presenting and what we're asking. But I just wanna let you know that when day one, when I came to the board, I haven't seen any difference of what other board members haven't had experience of what these uh new board members have, me board members have experienced tonight. So I apologize to our our new trustees for for uh not for us not being able to to um answer some of these uh questions that you have. And I think it's it's a lesson learned from all of us that we need to be to be to be more transparent and have things organized before uh we come to a meeting to avoid these kind of situations. Um I hope not, I hope that nobody feels embarrassed, but I think that we're gonna be a productive board by by leadership, not only from us, but from all the administrators that need to be um also working with the board, because if we fail, we've all failed. So I think that we can continue working in the efforts of our students and our community and and um all our stakeholders. So at this time, if there is no further questions um from the board, then I would like um Mr. Ayala at this time. Uh if Mr. Torres doesn't have any any other input that will lead us into the right direction, so we can make a decision tonight. Thank you. No, I think so, okay, Mr. Ayala.
Uh so at at this time, um considering what administration shared with the matrix, um we, administration does recommend going with first vendor, um as initially stated.
Do I have a motion for the first vendor?
I I put the motion.
Give me the motion for the first vendor?
For the first one.
Do I have a motion? Okay, so motion, uh Mr. Estrada. Mrs. Sepúlveda Ramirez. Mr. uh Angel Ornetas.
Aye.
Mr. Orlando Flores.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes, Terry, can you read most? Thank you, Mr. Vehi.
Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, I don't know for everybody, I I did not hear what Ms. um Rodriguez said. I didn't hear all of the votes, can that be repeated, please, for the people who are watching virtually?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm just asking, did the motion pass?
Yes, she's gonna go handle it, Dr. Vehi.
The votes were four one for Veritex with Mr. uh Estrada voting against.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Vehi? Before we move on?
No, ma'am.
The next item in the agenda is uh discussion of possible approval of Moik Casey's strategies, planning process, and dates of training, Dr. Vehi?
I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Michelle Gonzalez, who'll present to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, President Gonzalez, Dr. Vehi, members of the board and community. Um this evening, and it's timely, we have an opportunity uh to uh move forward with some strategic planning for the district. And um continuous improvement is what we're all about, and I think that's fitting, and we have an opportunity tonight to have a uh for you all to have a a public support for being uh an integral part of this process. So the district is working with a company called Moik Casey uh to uh work on some strategic um planning going forward. And one of the things that um is appealing about this uh particular process is um it's going to result in a balanced scorecard. So as as many of you know, in the past, working with Lone Star Government, focusing on student outcomes is a very positive thing, and student outcomes will certainly be at the forefront of this scorecard. But it's more holistic in that we're looking at the operations of the district, the student outcomes and achievement as well, uh a high performing uh and engaged workforce. Uh so with this scorecard that we're going to create together, it's about all stakeholders coming together, and the board is a big part of that. So we have an opportunity tonight uh to, with your support, uh to schedule some dates for some training. And in your packet, you have information about the company, you have a copy of the agreement with the district uh with Moik Casey for strategic planning. And uh we have some possible dates as well, the dates that were proposed in your packet were February eighth or February twenty seventh, just in keeping with the Wednesday evening. But I would like to let y'all know that Saturdays are also available to you if you'd like to move forward uh with the board training portion of this uh strategic planning, and then the board will be a part of that planning going forward as well. I did highlight, you have it in your packet, but for the benefit of those listening, um Moik Casey's target approach produces a clear focus with a concise final product, and that's the balanced scorecard that I was speaking of, it consists of beliefs, mission, vision, strategic perspectives, long-term goals, annual goals, and critical leading indicators that inform the board and community how the district is progressing with its strategic plan, and helps each faculty and staff member see how his or her daily work fits into the overall objectives. The balanced scorecard focuses on an organization's strategic goals and provides guidance in choosing the right things to measure to sustain long-term success at all levels of the organization. So at this time, I'm I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can are move forward also with selecting dates. This is a two-hour training uh that Moik Casey will provide um in person, and we we're happy to entertain some dates or answer any questions that you have.
It's uh just to clarify, this is um Veronica Vehi, just uh it it's a two-hour workshop each time. And so the Moik Casey will work with the school board, will work with the community, and will work with um leadership. And then three weeks later, they do the same rounds with the same groups, um that is with the board in a workshop setting for another two hours. Um then the com- and the community and uh leadership. When I brought this um to Ms. Gonzalez's attention, um Ms. uh Board President Gonzalez um was understanding that this was the same type of um process with Lone Star Governance as uh Ms. Michelle Gonzalez mentioned. And um Ms. uh President Gonzalez said that she would like to, this isn't up for a vote, a yes or a no, she would like to acknowledge or would like an acknowledgement from the board members that are present to move forward with strategic planning through Moik Casey um so that there's some some buy-in and admittedly in in a public meeting um to see that everybody is is on board with moving forward.
Do you have any questions from any board members?
Hello.
Um through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Vehi.
Uh Dr. Vehi, I just think it would have been nice if we would have uh been exposed to this before tonight, um some type of a PowerPoint, um. I did uh do a search online for the company, uh there was no reviews that I could find. Um so at this point, um to me, we're just, in my own personal opinion, we're going in uh as the blind person, because honestly, um I think that um there should have been a better uh way to present this to us, and it wasn't.
I I can just mention that there's a a district um that has uh the balanced scorecard posted that work with Moik Casey that you might be interested in looking at um ahead of the training date, if you'd like to get more more background as well.
Through the chair, Ms. Gonzalez, I agree, and that's perfect, but I think that should have been done beforehand, and not now when it's too late. Because it's already, it's a done deal, right?
Right, we're not asking you to select the company, we're asking you to join us in the strategic planning.
So in other words, um you didn't take the board into consideration.
Mr. Ornelas, uh this was a conversation that I did have with President Gonzalez, and she did ask me that question. And did I know of other boards that were participating? I told her of a local board that is participating, and I also talked about the other uh school board um that I knew had participated in this. Um neither she nor I um discussed adding a a a scorecard for another um school district um uh in in the board packet, so I apologize if um we didn't go that route, but this is a discussion that did did take place between the board president and myself, so I'll I'll take the blame for that, uh Mr. Ornelas.
Dr. Vehi, so is it always just the superintendent and the the board president?
As we're talking about uh board agenda items, th- this is the way this one happened, yes, sir.
Is that in policy?
No, sir.
So any of us can be at that meeting when you all meet?
You could be, sure, sure, you could be, but it does say in the board operating procedures that it is the board president and the superintendent that set the agenda. And so um all I will ask is um in return, um sir, you've asked us for more information or a different way to set it up. I would just ask for that in advan- with advance notice so that we could prepare it a different way as well, that's all I'm asking.
But how can I give you advance notice if I have no idea?
Well, it was it was a line item, it's the agenda, and so if there's a question about what is this, or who is this, or is there an example we could look at? Um I'm, we're certainly happy to provide that for you.
But when you uh looked into this, how could I ask you if I had no idea you were looking into this?
It was, it's it's posted as an agenda item, that's what, that's all I'm saying. And you and you were provided the draft, um if if I'm not mistaken, a week before, um could double check with um Ms. Rodriguez.
What I'm saying is me asking you and you presenting, it's too late because you already looked into it, you decided you wanted it. So what's the sense of showing it to me if it's a done deal?
It's not a done deal for the board, sir, it is a done deal for administration to go through a strategic processing uh system as well as uh to include the community. So if the board chooses not to participate in this one, and you want me to keep looking for others, that's certainly an option for you.
Not the question, the question is, I think I'd have courtesy. Um we, you could have mentioned this a long time ago, and and that would have been fine. And then if we had questions, we could have asked you before everything was signed.
Right, we've we've talked about strategic planning, we didn't talk particularly about this um Moik and Casey uh organization. Um uh we've looked at other ones, and you're absolutely correct, sir. We we could bring this to you um before, we, but I will say that we were all in agreement the last time that we met that uh training would be beneficial to um the board.
And I agree. But it's almost like, I think I got blindsided here, so. But I'm willing to go with the training and best thing for us, because we do need to learn, especially us three new board members. Uh so I just.
Discussion before you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, Dr. Vehi, uh yes, and and you presenting this to me was just very recently, Thursday or Friday. And um you had asked me to to contact some of the board members, board members, but then you you had uh information also on um the following day about you, we are ready for the HVAC uh documentation, you were just waiting for approval from T E A. So I I made a recommendation to you to just to put it, to go ahead and put it as an agenda item to discuss and let them uh make a a decision if they were interested in this kind of um uh workshop training. Um because of of, we keep on hearing and it's being pointed out to us that we need training, which is definitely should be happening, we know that we need training, uh all of us, not even, not only the new board members. All of us needs to get get back into the the team of eight. But I just wanna share with you that I did share just real brief what you had told me, I didn't wanna go into detail a lot because I didn't want to um. I didn't want to emphasize too much on what was going to be in the packet. And you read in a lot of these things that I read, yes, they were familiar with the Lone Star Governance, but you said it's not to an extent. But I also saw that even though those two hours is still going to be more, I guess we have to call them for more training. They have the levels of services that they also continue in the packet. So I, like I said, it was just very preliminary that me and you discussed it. So that's why I made, I agree with you to go ahead and let the board make a decision. And I did inform them that you were, you were going to, whether we acknowledged it or not, that you were, like you just said right now, that you had already going to be in the process of your, the partnership with your administrators and your staff and also with the community. So as, as I guess, again, here we go again, you know, we need to review some of our board procedures to where, and policies that we have and and especially our local policies, but I think that, that we're all here in the, in the same interest of our students and our staff and our administrators and all our stakeholders, maintenance and operations, our, of our health departments that we have. But I think it would be beneficial for us to take it, to take this training if you are interested. Of course, we're continuing doing process on the online trainings with Hasby and also we're going to continue with Region 19. But this, board members, if you would like to have this and jump in with what they're doing, I don't know how far like Mr. Ornelas mentioned, I don't know how far back you had already been in COTEC with this kind of workshop, you know, the strategic planning and the process. I don't know how far back you had already had it and it's really being presented in January. So I don't know if it's been, I guess, to make a decision so fast, I guess you did some research and, and you know, the Mo Kasey consultants that are having these planning services for FABs. I think that it's very important being brought to our attentions in January, but I'm pretty sure that you must have had other, other meetings with them to, to be so, so, what do you call it, approving these kind of, of trainings for, for your staff. Okay, so again, I think it helps us to grow. But I think surveys and, and meetings would be very influential for us to also join. So we can be all in the same trend.
So what I'll say is that we have, we have been looking at strategic planning for a really long time. And the strategic planning that happened with the previous board was through Lone Star Governance. We talked about how we abandoned Lone Star Governance. But I felt it was still very important for administration to participate in visioning, to look beyond immediate goals and set goals for the future. And so, yes, the work had begun with administration. We had actually looked at another region, Region 13, and they offered strategic planning. However, theirs did not include the members of the board and the community. And remember, we talked about in our conversation, Ms. Gonzalez, the importance of bringing in community. And so this was one that had all three. It had the pillar of addressing board members, community, and administration. And so I, I think as we move along, Mr. Ornelas, this is not anything that I would want to keep from you. Instead, I'm trying to do some of the groundwork and, and, and obviously the trust will be built through as we work more and more together. But I can give you my word, I can tell you that by the time I'm bringing something to you, I've done some homework. And this is the only one that had all three of the components that we had talked about very, to be very important. It also happened to be very timely because three, we have three new board members. And we also talked about superintendent goals at our last meeting. And I believe it was you, Mr. Ornelas, that asked, well, why wasn't there, why weren't there goals that were posted for the superintendent? I believe that if we can get some workshops in the books by creating this scorecard where there's buy-in from the board, the community and leadership, then that would give you actually more of a vehicle, a, as, as Ms. Gonzalez described, a scorecard to, to do the superintendent's evaluation. So, yes, I did do some research and I did take the liberty of having this conversation with Ms. Gonzalez. And, and really it was for the benefit of actually doing that, that background work for you. But we can certainly talk about doing it in a different way. And there's, there's nothing that we are breaking about local policy or board operating procedures here. It's just more of a conversation and getting to work together as a team of eight so we can move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Vehil, and just to reply to your comment. I agree, but conversations didn't happen. But and it, we keep hearing, we need to trust our administration. I agree, but just like you said, trust has to be earned. I did not know you and I still don't know you personally. Now, how am I going to just go in trusting somebody a hundred percent? It has to be earned and thank you for doing the background, your homework on this. And yes, we do need the training. But I, I don't think we should be left out of, of the loop. And just a simple conversation, Mr. Ornelas or the board. Region 13 has this one, but it doesn't offer community or whatever, but this one does. Hey, we want the one that offers everything, right? Perfect. We're in the loop. You did your homework, you take the credit and you start earning my trust. And that's my belief. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment as well. I think if I remember correctly, at our training, we asked you to do this. Dr. Vehil, is that correct?
Yes, you asked for some training so that we could, so that the board members would know how to proceed with setting up superintendent goals and just more training in general for the role of the board member. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because I thought I remember asking that. I remember that. So we just want to, I mean, I think that's.
Yes, Mr. Flores, it was asked, but you know what, this, this has been done like Dr. Vehil said. He's doing, he's doing her, her research on this program. So it just fell in, just, it just fell in right in place. So it's nothing that was done extra for, for the board. It was already implemented when she looked into it back then. So I think that the clarification has been done for Dr. Vehil and the discussion is now that, that we all understand how this happened. It hasn't, it doesn't have to be explained to us. Because Dr. Vehil, you did, like Mr. Ornelas already said, and I, and you narrated also that you had already considered this program a fallback. So, and it just fell in place. It fell in place with what we are looking for. So if there's not any other questions, I would like to move on.
I want to just say thank you for finding this, finding this training for us.
You're welcome.
I just want to add something. Thank you, Dr. Vehil, for writing this training. And I also want to say this training is not only for us new ones, but also for the existing board members. So you could attend as well.
Yes, sir, it's intended to promote the team of eight concept. Yes, sir, it's absolutely for everybody. Definitely want everybody to participate. And as much of the community that we can get in the community meetings, I think it's important to hear everybody's voice. So thank you for saying that, Mr. Estrel.
Dr. Vehil, I just have one question. Also acknowledging that your efforts with also Ms. Gonzalez in bringing these kind of trainings, because I know she does a lot of her legwork herself too and having Dr. Galaviz, you know, I'm pretty sure that you have them all involved. I don't know if Mr. Torres has been involved in this process.
Yes, he was.
It's Executive Cabinet, so Mr. Torres, myself and Dr. Vehil that have been discussing the strategic planning efforts with Region 13 and then now we're getting ready to start, but we haven't started with Mo Kasey.
Thank you. I just have a question because I saw on the fees that they're allocating and the fees that that we're going to have to come up with. Mr. Torres, where were we going to get the funding for, for this kind of fees, the fees that this program is going to be for their service?
It's actually coming out of our training and staff development line item. There's two fees in there. I think it's nine thousand five hundred for the consultant fees. That will come out of your sixty-two hundred accounts. And the travel is three thousand dollars. That comes out of sixty-four travel allowances. So a total of two thou- twelve thousand five hundred. And it's coming out of our staff development line item.
And this is for how long?
This is, I believe, eight sessions, Dr. Vehil.
It's, it's the two, the two sessions that are going to happen. But there are three groups at each session. So you'll have a total of two, two-hour sessions, Mr. Ornelas. And then there is that sheet at the very end that if you get to the end and you want some more training, then, then you can decide as a board that you want to continue training with them. So I hope I've described that correctly. I did, I do want to confirm with everybody that I had checked with Mr. Torres beforehand to ensure that we had money and the appropriate budgets to move forward with this. Actually, Region 13 was actually a little bit more expensive, so this one is, is less money.
Thank you, Dr. Vehil. But you see it in your packet. And yes, you'll see that also that the district has signed. You know, so if we do both, do with it, it looks like it was signed on the second of January, is that correct, Dr. Vehil?
If that's what the date says, yes, ma'am.
And that's Mrs. Gonzalez, that's also on the attachments. Those are all the additional services that they have and what is and the charge for that, for the hour, correct?
Correct.
Right, but like she said, those are if you choose to add on after.
And on these, we have to go ahead and fly her back in?
If you want them in person.
Or we can have them virtually, right?
Certainly, we can look into virtual. If that's something you all prefer.
Okay, that's what my question was.
Just a question, Ms. Gonzalez. So the sessions would be like all mixed, board members, staff, administration, community members? Or will it be like, like all administration, staff?
It'll be three different meetings where the board is in a workshop session and it's, it's it's, it's the staff of Mo Kasey working with the board for their role. And then for leadership, what their role is and the same kinds of priorities. And then the community is an evening meeting. And that is a different meeting where, of course, board members are invited to attend. However, it's set up so that the voice of the community is heard. So it's three separate sessions each time. Three weeks after the first set of three sessions take place, then they do it all over again.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions on the floor? Well, Dr. Vehil, Mrs. Gonzalez, thank you for presenting this and sending this to the board. I think me and you, Dr. Vehil, I have a opportunity to talk to Mrs. Gonzalez, but I think that these strategic planings that we are having in the process, you know, on our trainings, I think that the board will benefit from, from these trainings. Just, you know, we just need to be a little bit more transparent. If the other board members wants to put something in the agenda, please reach out to Dr. Vehil so she can go ahead and give you a little bit more information on any agenda item that we have that's going to be presented, okay, at any time.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
It doesn't have to be the agenda. I mean, you're always free to talk to her, any concerns that you have or just want to discuss whether there's some, some concerns or just, just, just meet with her. You know, I'm pretty sure that she will want to, to meet with you so, you know, so we can all be trained appropriately and in timely manner. The other question I have is there's not any other discussion from the board? Any other discussion? Okay, at this time, I, I do want, I did tell Mr. Morales and, and I just want to go back, Terry, that, you know, because of work related, he's not able to attend. So he, he is interested in these kind of workshops and training. But due to because of his commitment with his work, you know, he, he has told us already before in this meeting, pardon me, that he would like to have a Saturday, a Saturday training to where he can, he can join us. Mr. Escobar, I tried to reach him yesterday and this morning, but I he wants to relate to, to these kind of trainings. But I'm just hoping, like, like you just said, Mrs. Gonzalez, then, you know, the dates, they put possible dates, but I'm considering if it's possible a Saturday.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to share that with the board because it was requested from Mr. Morales.
And if you'd like to pick a priority, like if you all decide a Saturday, you say this is our first choice, this is our second choice, that would be very helpful in moving it along.
So that means that we don't have to make a decision tonight on that. We could just have it like.
Preferable that you give us some choices tonight, but if you can't do that, we understand. And this is a board recommendation, so it's up to you if you want to make a motion for the board to commit to this process or to join us in this process. You're welcome to do so as well.
Well, I would like to recommend to the board that, you know, that we, we get a Saturday. And, and if he's able to, to, I'll reach him out tomorrow and he's able to comply with it, but we have some other dates to availability and we take it from there, which, which dates we can, we can have, whether it's a Saturday or during the week that, you know. I know Mondays are very hard for a lot of us. Okay, so you also stated on a Wednesday. If it's possible, I mean, I'll just leave it out to the board at this time. Any dates from the board? You have your calendars with you? Was thinking if possible, if it's a Saturday on the eleventh or the eighteenth?
The eleventh, the three of us, we have training.
Oh, yes, okay.
On the twenty-fifth, we already have it set up for the superintendent, so.
Okay.
The evaluation, is that what you're talking about, Mr. Estrel?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, remember, we had set up that for February.
For the end of March, that's for the end of March, not February.
No, it's in February, didn't we say February?
Said February twenty-fifth because that was the day he was available. That's what I have.
Yes, I think it is the twenty-fifth for the value.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, my mistake.
It's at ten AM, February twenty-fifth.
Okay. So. So um any other dates? But it looks like our, our Saturdays in February pretty much taken. Uh, Dr. Vichy and Ms. Gonzalez, can we do, can we jump to March or not? For the availability of the training?
When the spring break for?
Spring break is the thirteenth through the seventeenth of March.
Okay. So can we target for March the fourth? It's right, right, the end of the week of, uh, the last week of February? Could uh be, who we target on February and, um, March fourth? It's the end of um, it's the last, the last, the first Saturday in uh March.
That's a TASB training now?
But isn't that, isn't that, isn't that during the, is that the one virtual?
March first to the fourth, oh, ma'am. That's a governance training for TASB in Galveston.
Oh, okay, so you're going to, yeah. Oh, yes. Okay, well, we were trying, but I guess.
The eighteen for February? But spring, no.
On February the eighteen?
No, March. Are you saying February eighteen?
Yeah, February eighteen.
That day is a bit, I don't know.
February eighteen. Check your calendars. Do we have anything in the school, Terry?
Looks clear.
I'm okay with February eighteen.
Okay. Okay, can we get another day, like during the week that you, you all want to target?
That, Tuesday, the twenty-first?
The twenty-first, any other days, Mr. Ornelas, Mr. Flores, Mrs. Ramirez?
I'm open during the week.
Mr. Flores?
Twenty-first through the ninth.
Okay, and any other dates besides, we only have right now February the eighteenth, it's a Saturday, correct? Terry, Mr. Rodriguez, and then we have February, this, the twenty-first on a Tuesday? Is, is there any other date that you want to add?
And there's nothing on the twenty-first?
Or if he needs you to start at the board meeting time, if you need to start later, if you wanted to go back on Wednesdays.
Could we do that?
It's a two-hour training.
Just attach it to our board meeting? We're here till midnight, that's the time.
Oh, no. It's not going to happen again. They're going to be staying till midnight. Because during the week, we, all of us have commitments. I mean, that's my, my suggestion.
We're here, so I figured we're here, we might as well knock it out.
It's a one uh decision.
The third Wednesday is February fifteenth. That's when the next regularly scheduled board meeting is to take place.
And I, and I know that, I know that he uh has asked for, for, for uh release on the board meetings too.
Yeah, so, so what about the twenty-fifth, we're going to do the evaluation, right?
Yes.
How long will that take or less?
It shouldn't take more than two hours.
So you're thinking like starting with training and then going into that?
Uh huh, uh huh. Or, or vice versa, we can do the evaluation.
We'll be here, like Mr. Torres said, so that's an option.
Yeah. So the twenty-fifth, you can do it on the twenty-fifth.
That's fine, that way Mr. Morales could be present.
Okay.
Start early at eight and then continue at ten.
Okay, Terry. Ms. Rodriguez, I'm so sorry that I keep coming by, by your name. Okay, let's go ahead and target for the twenty-fifth. That's uh huh, or the twenty-fifth, correct?
Everybody's available all three dates?
Yes.
Your first choice, the twenty-fifth, is that correct?
Yes.
Second choice would be the twenty-first or the eighteen?
The twenty-first, okay.
And third choice, the eighteen?
Yes, okay. No, no, the eighteen is the second choice, right?
The first one's the eighteenth, right?
Got it. What? The first is the eighteen?
I have the first choice.
Okay, oh, yes, okay, first choice, sorry. And then second, the twenty-fifth?
The twenty-first and then the twenty.
Okay, and then third would be the twenty-first, okay?
Mr. Flores won't be here on the eighteen.
So these are still the options, so we'll make the options, okay? And we'll, we'll consider that he's not going to be here on the twenty-fifth. He's not going to be here on the twenty-fifth, that's going to be the, the evaluation, okay?
Yeah.
And the eighteen is when you have a commitment, right? Mr. Flores, okay. So we'll work on those dates, okay? So do I have a question? Like, we really have a motion? We're going to make a motion. Make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mr. Estrada made the motion, second by Mr. Ornelas.
What, what is the motion? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Uh, Dr. Vichy?
Yes.
Uh, consider three dates, okay, for February. February the eighteen, February the twenty fir- uh, the twenty-first, that's a third option, and February the twenty-fifth is a second option.
Okay, so is the motion to consider these dates for training with Mo Casey?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Keep forgetting that you're, you're, okay? So the motion has been uh done by Mr. Estrada. And then second by Mr. Ornelas, Dr. Vichy.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, motions have been made and second, going to go to the next item. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Estrada.
Aye.
Mrs. Ramirez.
Aye.
Mr. Ornelas.
Aye.
Mr. Flores. The chair, aye.
Thank you.
Terry? Terry's? If there is no business, if there is no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Seven thirty-four?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Flores, motions to adjourn? Mr. Estrada, seconds. Y'all have a nice evening. Have a nice week, thank you. Okay? So, Mr. Mr. Estrada. Mrs. Ramirez.
Aye.
Mr. Ornelas.
Aye.
Mr. Flores. And I, the chair? Five chairs. Again, have a nice evening. Thank you, everybody.